Okay. Good evening, everyone. Sorry, we're about five minutes late. We were in executive session and we lost track of time. What we'd like to do is now move on to the public hearing to discuss the firefighters and ambulance workers' tax exemption. With that, I'll turn it over to Harvey, who will give us a one-over-the-world review of this issue. Thank you.
Good evening. Tonight's public hearing is focused on the, as it indicates here, the volunteer fireman, firefighter, and ambulance worker's property tax exemption. What we're going to do is I'm just going to, this is just a couple of slides, just to enlighten everybody as to what this is all about, and then we'll open it up for any kind of public opinion, public comment, as well as from the board. So first and foremost, what is this law? New York State legislation, there's been some recent changes, and what it includes now is that all taxing jurisdictions, which means not just a town, but such as a school district, we have the ability to offer this as a exemption, which is 10% of your property value, in terms of your assessed value, provided you meet certain criteria. The reason that this went into effect was the state was looking to implement some kind of a recruitment and, you know, retention tool for first responders, because a lot of communication that they've been receiving was that it's difficult, many towns and many places, to have the right number of people and the right quality. So what is the eligibility? How do you qualify for this? A volunteer firefighter or ambulance worker must first and foremost reside in the district. Secondly, they must be an active member of the respective volunteer fire company or fire department, or the volunteer ambulance company. Second, as part of that point, that firefighter company and the ambulance must service the district that we are talking about here, which is Cornwall. So this can't be like Newburgh Fire Department. This has to be within the Cornwall School District. Secondly, the individuals, the volunteers, must utilize their residence within the district as their primary residence. Okay? It can't be rental property or commercial property. And last, in order to be eligible for this, you must be certified by your respective fire company or voluntary ambulance service that you have provided anywhere from two to five years of active service. Now, the reason I say anywhere from two to five years, the district tonight will make a decision as to what number they will be pegging this to. We are recommending that it be two years, even though they have the option of going up to five. What are some of the added benefits with regards to this exemption? Number one, if you have 20-plus years of active service, you have the ability to be granted this 10% exemption for life. Okay? So you put in 20 years, say you stop after year 20, 21, whatever, you have the ability to get this on a lifetime basis. What happens if the volunteer passes away? Okay? The surviving spouse is offered the ability to have it extended as long as the volunteer served that 20 years, and as it indicated there, they were receiving the exemption immediately prior to their death. Okay? I have it listed there, but it goes kind of without saying that they have to obviously be within the Cornwall Central School District in their primary residence. That's primary. Okay? What happens if, God forbid, one of these volunteers is killed in the line of duty? The same situation applies. The surviving spouse, as long as they do not remarry, has the ability to be extended this exemption for as long as the volunteer was enrolled for five years, not to 20. So what the difference is between the, if you're just regularly deceased versus if you were killed in action, is the number of years of service. It's either 20 or five. What's the impact? To the school district itself, there's no fiscal impact. Okay? And the reason for that is for the reasons mentioned for the district property taxpayers. The exemption reduces the total taxable assessed value. So think of that as the big pool of everybody's property, the value. Okay? It just reduces it by that exemption. What that means is that the pool is a little smaller by which the tax levy is assessed over. So the tax levy is spread out over that value. Because it's a smidgen less, everybody else who is not exempt will receive a very slight increase. At this point, I'll open it up for any questions, comments, et cetera.
Hey Harvey, because this is a public hearing, this is open to the public to ask questions of you.
Yes, anybody in this room.
So I know we have a number of people here tonight. Anyone interested, please, because this is being recorded, use a microphone. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy Bryan. I just, I want to commend this board for taking this action. I think this is outstanding, and I especially want to commend this board for doing the additional part where for people that have been volunteers in excess of 20 years, as long as they reside in the school district, will also get the benefit. I attended a webinar that the Fire Association of the State of New York put on when this first came out, and as far as the impact to other taxpayers, they used the Bethlehem School District outside of Albany, which is bigger than Cornwall, and, or maybe close to the same size, I think. And it, the impact is really negligible to other taxpayers. And to honor the people that serve the community for the length of time, in addition to those that are currently volunteering, is an outstanding thing, and I commend this board, and I thank you.
Good evening, Charlie Quinn. I'm the chief of the Cornwall Hudson Fire Department, and thank you very much for considering this resolution. It will have very little impact on the school district, and one of the reasons, right now, there are so few homeowners who are in our volunteer fire departments. In the village of Cornwall and Hudson, we have fewer than a dozen homeowners, and of those, only six live in the village of Cornwall and Hudson. We recruit out of the high school and middle school. We get a lot of new members to the fire companies that way, but we live in a very expensive area. As soon as those firefighters move out of their parents' houses, they're not getting homes in our village or our town. The taxes are too high. Hopefully, this decrease in taxes to them will encourage them to buy houses in the school district and remain here longer term and provide a healthier fire service to the community.
Anyone else? Questions from the board? Okay.
I would love to jump in with just one. Harvey, I just want to clarify something. It's the, on the additional benefits page, so it would have been previous exemption for unremarried surviving spouse. So there are two criteria there that might conflict. So the first one, if the deceased volunteer was an enrolled member for at least five years, the deceased volunteer was receiving the exemption prior to death. So let's say we have somebody who is just qualified for the exemption, two years. They haven't hit the five years, but they have, they received the exemption. God forbid, accident happens, their surviving spouse would still get it. They would not have to reach the five years, or would they have had to?
They would have to.
Can we just marry that and make it two years? Is that something that we, is that something from the state that we can't budge on? It just seems so trivial. If there's someone in year three, we're going to hold them to three years of service and say their spouse couldn't get it?
I believe that that is in the law, the 20 and the five.
Okay. And there's no local control over that?
The only local control is the, the two, between the two and the five years that you must to actually get the initial exemption.
Well, my suggestion then would just be do as much as we can right now, and then look into whether we can get that changed. It seems like it's an oversight. Yeah? But, okay.
We can certainly look, I can certainly look into that, and it's nothing to simply amend it.
Yeah.
If it comes down the pipe.
Yep.
Christian?
There's a bunch of questions. So, because I'm probably the only board member who definitely qualifies on these terms, because my wife has been a member of the back for, I think, over 15 years. You know, obviously, it's a compromise, and I'm not going to be voting for it. But, I just wanted to say, because they've turned this one line of time, so that's the value of the time, once they have minimum, right? That's the minimum, that's the thing, that's about 4,500 dollars. Here, if we just value it, and, my wife, she appears where he probably did something over $20,000, probably for probably five, 10 years. And, you know, I'm thinking of the, and here, first one is that if you look at the report, or what if you keep on a district recording page, I can do, that's, yeah, you know, we're adding $65,000, and he cannot, by all his life, we get $100,000 while our taxes are in target, and that's $5,000. $5,000, when I'm a lot, when I'm five, five dollars behind, 4,500, 5,000, and that's where you get money, it's not. And it seems to me that, you know, while it's not going to affect the industry, it's affecting the tax increase, and it seems to be a hundred grand, I think, by some people here. The other thing about it is that, the big thing, people walk into, they work, I guess, my experience, where they're fired up, well, a lot of people work in the act of law here and, because they are young, they, you know, for three years, they were not, they were eight, and, um, look at the people, even five or six years, because a lot of it's all the content. So, I wonder if, if the fact is that it's actually, so, that's one question, I think that's.
Just, you say negligible on the typical homeowner? I mean, Christian said $5,000, seems like it'd be $5 or $10 for a typical, I mean, do you have an estimate on what that, we're talking tens of dollars, not hundreds of dollars for?
Right. We surveyed all the firehouses and the ambulances, and it comes down to between $4 and $5 of an increase in taxes for everybody else who doesn't get this exemption.
I think it's fair to say $4 or $5 is negligible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Harvey. Oh, sure, Bass, hold on, Harvey. Bass has a question.
Again, my personal opinion is it would be good to have this on the books, even if not too many would benefit from it. It's good to have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Harvey, and thank you all who provided comments on this initiative. I think it's very important. Okay, that brings us then to our normal meeting.
Do we vote on that now?
No, it's, we're, that was a public hearing?
Okay.
And so we're not even in the board meeting. We're just kind of...
The vote is in the board meeting.
Yeah. And we're about to move into, what a great segue. Let's, let's move, I'd like to open the meeting and ask everyone to stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty. Well, thank you, everyone, for being here this evening. I would like to just follow our agenda for the time being, and I noticed that we have a number of people in the audience tonight, and ask for anyone to come forward who has any public comments or statements to make. I asked you to grab a microphone, state your name, and try to limit your comments to a reasonable amount of time. There'll be an opportunity at the end of the regular board meeting for an additional commentary period. So thank you.
Hello. My name is Cynthia Facillo. I want to start by thanking our superintendent, Terry Dade, and the board and the district for all your hard work and dedication to our children and to this community. I am a parent, an educator, and a UPK advocate. Two years ago, we started up with three providers and 60 slots, as superintendent Terry Dade was well aware of. We started a Facebook page to share our advocacy events and efforts with other parents and families, and have since grown to over 400 people on this page, and we continue to grow our community daily. Now we have 80 slots and four providers, and with UPK for 2024 coming up, it would be reason that the district will continue to advance the growth of UPK to 100 slots. I've had conversations with Senator Skoufis, and he has stated that the state is in its final phase of budgeting, and that he fully expects the district to fund, with the help of the state, the extra 20 slots. So that's coming from him directly. He has also stated he wants the district to begin offering in-house UPK, which I know is one of the goals of superintendent Terry Dade, and that he's currently working on. It is our goal as parents and as a community to see our youngest learners provided with the best head start possible, and UPK has proven to provide the foundation needed to excel in kindergarten and throughout the elementary years. My little one is an example of that. It is with this that I end my comment with a question to the board, that I will be looking for an answer at the next board meeting. And that question is, how will the board of Cornwall continue to prioritize our youngest learners, and how will the board continue to support the growth of UPK? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Rob Sanchez. I wanted to just add a quick comment as well. We closed on our house a few days before the opening of UPK for the first time ever, and my son was in the lottery in that first round. And then, just so that there's no perception that I benefit from the increase to 100, my daughter will be in this round, and so my family won't benefit from the 100. But I just wanted to say that as great as it is on the education side, it was also great for us from the community side. Coming into Cornwall, we immediately had a family around us that pulled from all of the towns in the local area. And so I just wanted to say that UPK is great at the community building aspect as well. It gave us a home here in a community that we had chosen. And on top of that, it was great for our son as well, and helped him integrate into the school district.
Great, thank you.
Hi, I'll go back here. I'm just, I'm Jamie Fox. My first board meeting, I'm very excited. I just wanted to thank Cynthia for being here, for telling us about this meeting. As you can see, I am due with my second child, hopefully in the next month, not in the next few minutes or days. And I have a three-year-old as well, and he goes to Butter Hill. We're very fortunate with the school district here. That's actually why we moved to Cornwall, as a public school graduate myself. But yeah, next year, without UPK, we will be paying about $25,000 a year for our two kids to get childcare. So UPK is also, like, it's a great lifeline, and it's a resource that is sorely needed for any parents, one, two, three children, like many people in our community. Not to mention, you know, the lottery's great, but it is unfair to some kids, you won't get in, and parents might not be able to, you know, fund that for them, and then they'll be behind in kindergarten. So, just my two cents. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Suela Mardini. I'm really, I'm from Albania. My first daughter, we had to pay UPK, and for this second one, we are hoping, I hope she'll get in. And thank you, thank you, Cynthia. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. All right. I think that is it on the public comments. As I mentioned before, there'll be a round two at the, toward the end of the meeting. Okay, let's move on to reports. Let's start with Kate Nicholas with student reports. Thank you.
All right, this is good news for Cornwall Elementary School in February. February flew by for everyone here at Cornwall Elementary School. We spent the month focusing on our character trait of responsibility, and also prepared our school for our author visit. On January 31st, we had 30 students participate in the Elementary Science Expo, held at CCMS. We are so proud of our third and fourth graders who put in the time and effort outside of class to investigate STEM. Mrs. Lauk's third grade class teamed up with Mrs. Aguilar's kindergarten class for Book Buddies activity, where the older students picked up a book to read to their younger partner. Not only were our kindergarteners exposed to a variety of new vocabulary skills, but our third graders got to participate their read-aloud skills. The students had a wonderful time reading and listening to the stories and getting to know each other. On February 9th, we welcomed author and illustrator John Parra to our school. John Parra is an award-winning illustrator, fine artist, designer, author, and educator. He is best known for his Latino-themed children's books, and he has received a multitude of accolades for his work, including three American Library Associations, Pura Belpray Honors, and two Golden Kite Awards from the Society of Children's Book Writers and Illustrators. In preparation for this event, our library team and art team joined forces to involve the students in lessons and activities revolving around the literary and artistic themes in John Parra's work. Students created their own graffiti wall, self-portraits, and stamps. We are so thankful for the hard work of Ms. Crechi, Ms. Hanson, Ms. Jados, and Mrs. DeGroot, who made this author visit possible. The students were so engaged and enthusiastic during Mr. Parra's assembly. Mrs. Aguilar's kindergarten class worked on a hibernation STEM lesson with our technology integration specialist, Ms. Jados. The students were tasked with building a den for a bear using marshmallows, toothpicks, coffee filters, and index cards. They came up with some great and innovative designs. We are now looking forward to our partners in reading program, the end of the second trimester, and preparing our students for the ELA state exam. All right, and this is moving on to Willow Avenue Good News. Willow hosted the fourth-grade PTO Winter Fest celebration. Fourth graders from all three elementary schools had a great time dancing, getting their faces painted, and enjoying arts and crafts. In honor of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., Willow students worked on a school-wide project. Dr. King said, "Just take the first step. You don't have to see the whole staircase. Just take the first step." We took steps to carry on his legacy by achieving 500 acts of kindness, and these acts are displayed in the main hallway. In honor of Black History Month, our second grade started their Fight for a Cause unit. Their focus is on civil rights, starting with Harriet Tubman, Susan B. Anthony, Jackie Robinson, and Martin Luther King, just to name a few. We are looking forward to learning about these famous Americans and seeing their projects displayed soon. Lastly, we celebrated the 100th Day of School with Spirit Day, including banners, music, and activities.
Good news for COH. The COH tutorial programs began on February 14th. The Win What I Need program is being offered to students in grades K through 4 who are struggling with their ELA and math skills. The New York State testing preparation programs will be offered to students in grade 3 and 4 and will run through each exam. Programs are held during the AM hours for all students. The teachers are very excited to be able to provide extra-targeted instruction to students in need. February 16th was the 100th Day of School at COH. Many students dressed up as if they were 100 years old, while others wore T-shirts with 100 objects glued to them. The students were challenged to find the 100 dragon cards that were hidden around the school and place them in the 100 cart chart hanging on the second floor. The last dragon was found at approximately 3:05 PM, and the task was completed. All the students had a wonderful time trying to find the 100 dragons. On Friday, February 16th, many classes participated in the annual Great Backyard Bird Count. Volunteers from the PTO worked with teachers to bring students outside to the COH garden. The children were asked to identify all the birds they saw or heard by using bird ID apps. The results were then sent to birdcount.org. Although it was a little chilly, the weather cooperated. On Monday, March 4th, the student council is scheduled to walk to the district office and visit with the superintendent. Each student has prepared two questions for Mr. Dade, and they are looking forward to hearing his responses. On Tuesday, March 5th, COH will be hosting our annual fourth-grade instrumental recital. Students in the band and orchestra from all three elementary schools will be performing solos and small group song selections for your enjoyment. The children have been working very hard and are excited to share their talents with you. Approximately 120 students are participating this year, a record number. We hope to see you there. And from the middle school, eighth-grade band and orchestra musicians had an opportunity to visit the high school and learn about the music program. Students were able to tour the music space, meet current CCHS band and orchestra students, and speak with Mr. Francia and Mr. Hoover. A big congratulations to Yanni Dascalas and Ben Huang for performing at this past weekend's OCMEA All-County Jazz Festival. These two students auditions back in January for this ensemble and were chosen as being among the best students of their age group from throughout Orange County. This year's CCMS spelling bee winners are Braylin Burkhart, 8th grade, and Courtney Pelage, 7th grade. Courtney and Braylin will represent CCMS in the countywide spelling bee at OU Boise in March. Good luck. All right, and the high school. Midterms were a success, and students are now looking forward to APN regional exams in the spring. In the second half of the year, juniors are also enjoying the luxuries of student parking, joining the seniors in this privilege. CCHS students celebrated Valentine's Day by purchasing cards and jewelry sold during their lunch periods. Valograms were also sold, where students could send a number of roses with a handwritten note to someone to be delivered first period on Valentine's Day. The following day, sophomores participated in an all-night-in-a-day, a remembrance day for victims of the Holocaust and the devastating impact it had in history. Students gathered in the auditorium to engage in presentations and other activities. The day before break, students also participated in the annual Dragon Breakfast. At this breakfast, 18 over CCHS students were honored for their hard work and accomplishments. In other news, NHS students are also working on completing their committee projects. Seniors Sophia Taylor and Patrick Cosgrove did an outstanding job collecting blankets and toys to be donated to the Hudson Valley SPCA. In terms of sports, we're proud to announce that the girls varsity ski team won the OCIA double-A team championship, as well as the Section 9 championship. They will be advancing to states. Girls indoor track and field also won the Section 9 championship and are preparing for states as well. All five of our science research students competed in the sub-regional Eastern New York Junior Science and Humanities Symposium, presenting their science research in the competition. Andrew Wu made personal accomplishments, placing second in his category at the science research program, where he researched genomic alterations in breast cancer, correlation with patient survival, and implications for treatment strategies. We wish him the best of luck this week as he advances onto the next step of presenting his research at the regional competition at SUNY Albany. The CCHS Drama Club is eagerly rehearsing for their spring musical, Something Rotten, which premieres April 11th to 14th. The CCHS a cappella ensembles have also been rehearsing for their upcoming performances at Acapella Night, which is March 8th at 7:00 PM. Looking forward, juniors and seniors are excited for their trip to Spain on spring break. And then, sorry, this is kind of a bad time, but Nick and I were going to ask before the meeting started, but Nick does have auditions, and I have some other obligations, so we were, I know this is a bad time to ask.
It's not a bad time.
I'm so sorry.
And actually, you beat me to the punch, because I know this time of year is quite busy for seniors in general, but the two outstanding ones that we have on the board here especially. So please feel free, thank you for providing us with the good news, and good luck. All right?
Thank you, appreciate it. Appreciate it.
Okay. Um, that was good news. Lot- lot- a lot of good things happening, continue to happen here in Cornwall. Moving on to our next agenda item, superintendent's update. Terry.
Thank you, John. Uh, so as I've done every year, this is my third year, I'm kind of shepherding the UPK, um, process here. I wanted to make sure that, you know, I've- I've said this a few times, we have some new board members. Senator Skufis and I still are on each other's Christmas list, even though he knows I- I have a very strong disagreement with how the state approaches UPK. Uh, so, um, as I said last year, boards all across New York have excess UPK seats because it's not a true universal pre-kindergarten. It's not 100% funding from the state, so as you know, the boards and districts have to pick up the delta, so there's a cost to our district and our- and our taxpayers. So, they can keep adding seats and the like, but it still comes down to a fiscal responsibility. So that's just my soapbox, Senator Skufis. I'll still send you a Christmas card. The other piece that I've- I feel like I've really tried to keep the board apprised on is that when you have a process that the state has enacted, it has to be a lottery. Even if you, um, have 60 applicants for 60 seats, there still has to be a lottery for the selection of which provider they're going to go to. So, it's a mandated lottery. That is important because I'll just go over the 23, 24 numbers, which are the numbers that we currently have in our existing program. Like Cynthia said, we allocated 80 seats. There were 123 total applicants, 110 on time, 13 late, but that's just me. 110 were on time before the window closed, 123 total applicants. I am currently on number 107 of offering a seat for UPK. So 123 applicants, I'm on number 107 to fill our 80 slots. That means there is a delta of 16 students for 23, 24. If we had another classroom, we would not have filled that classroom, even if all 16 of those families said, "Yes, we want our child at Butterhill," if that was the provider that had the extra section, which doesn't happen, and I'll go over the decline rate in a minute. We just, the numbers aren't supporting it for this year. The decline rate is about 25%, so a scenario, um, I'm, uh, my boys are in classes, I think, with two families in the- in the room, uh, so they know I- I love our providers, we're a proud family, um, in, um, in preschool. But we also have very strong feelings for our family about the four providers and where we would send our kids, and all of our families do that. There's- there's a particular reason why they're selecting certain programs, and it's not a- it's not a, Terry gave me a slot at X, I'm going to accept it. They're debating it. They're visiting the schools to see if it's the right fit. So that's really important for the board to know, because I don't want us to write a check that we can't cash. Now, what I will do for the board, as I've done every year, is, um, right now I have the numbers for this year, uh, so there was about a three-week, uh, there wasn't exactly a three-week window of application period last year. We're at week three for the 24, 25 school year, um, and we're at 108 applicants. Um, that is going to be for 78 seats. Um, the reason why there's two less is we brought in a new provider, Sportsplex. Uh, so now we have Ark of Learning, Butterhill, Windsor Academy, and Sportsplex, and the dimensions of the space that they have available, when Megan and I went to tour, uh, the facility and meet with the director, um, can only accommodate 18 students, so there'll be a total of 78 seats. Um, and we're at 108 applicants. The window will close next Monday at 3 o'clock. So I'll- I'll provide the board with an update of how many applicants we have, but just please keep that in mind of the number of applicants. Um, we should really be looking at the decline rate, and if- if there's a 25%, which has been our two years in a row, about a 25% decline rate, um, make sure that we have the applicants and families that would actually fill that classroom, because when we sign a contract with these providers, we're guaranteeing that we will be paying the 20 slots or the 18 slots, um, no matter if the kids show or- or not. So, um, I'll continue to keep everyone updated, um, but, um, that's- that's where we are. Again, strong supporter, I have a two and a three-year-old, so it's not, I'm just trying to make sure that you have all the information that you need to make, um, the decision that's right for the district. That's it.
That conclude your report?
Yes. I just wanted to give an update on UPK because it was timely.
On UPK?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, Terry. Um, that brings us to, uh, the president's report, and, um, I'm going to try to keep it brief, but cover, I think, a couple important topics, three or four. So the first one, um, just a capital project update. Um, I'm sure everyone's aware, but, uh, just to reiterate, on February 15th, the, um, the state did approve our Phase 2 plans, um, which is great news. When we were up in Albany, Christian and I earlier, uh, this month, the lag time and Harvey has already, uh, mentioned this, I think, at a facilities committee meeting earlier in the month, that- that currently the wait time is over nine months from submission date to getting, uh, contact with, uh, the state in terms of, uh, project plans. So, we're fortunate, especially since we're getting closer to this, what we hope to be the timeline start for Phase 2, uh, to have it approved. Now we're moving into, uh, the bidding process, and on, uh, you may recall, last time, we said that Palumbo would be here this evening to provide an update, um, based on the bidding that's currently, uh, in process. We just, and other things that we're going to be talking about this evening in the interest of time, uh, we're going to hold off and hopefully have a, uh, a better presentation, more comprehensive at the March meeting. So- so that has slipped a little bit, and, uh, I'm sorry, um, for that, but it's just, I think, a better use of everybody's time. I think we had some construction initiatives over the- the winter break. Um, so- so Phase 1, uh, to be done still is worked out, and I'll let Palumbo go through that with the- with the whole board, as well as Lewis in the facilities committee at our next meeting on that. Um, speaking of Lobby Day, uh, Christian and I did go up to- to Albany. We participated in it. If you have not been part of it, put it on your bucket list. It's a- it's a worthwhile enterprise. I know Brendan's been, I know, uh, Jim has been. Um, it's good to get out there, talk with other delegates within the state, and to get a sense of where everyone is and what the concerns are. Just so you know, what dominated the conversation was the governor's executive budget proposal and the issues with that, especially as it pertains to, uh, foundation aid. I, if- if we can believe what we heard from the legislators, there will be a compromise made, and it seems that the 337 districts that are receiving less in the budget than they received last year, that will be fixed. We insisted that you think about our district being fully funded, because we're still about $700,000 short of what we should be if foundation aid was fully funded. And, uh, I think we shared that message with, uh, both Assemblyman Ikus, as well as Senator Skufis, and they were quite receptive of it, but of course, politics plays a lot, and there sure is going to be a- a lot of horse trading on that. Uh, one thing I do want to say about UPK, to piggyback on some of the conversations, Senator Skufis did, uh, emphasize his support of UPK and that he is intending to ensure that legislation occurs to ensure the funding of it, but as Terry mentioned, he does have this, uh, peculiar position that there should be a certain amount of skin in the game that districts, um, share. What's interesting is, some districts don't have UPK, uh, and there's a- a pot of gold that is just being unused, that I think if the legislators were really serious about providing universal, um, uh, pre-K, that they would have find a way to- to better allocate these funds, so the districts that can make use of it actually, uh, provide that important initial learning for their students. Christian, do you have anything to add about Lobby Day?
Uh, just two things. I think first, a little bit lighthearted, and you have it in front of you, is that we tried to sneak in with a weapon, and the New York State Police stopped us and, uh, took it, and then, um, John used his very deft, sort of, um, what do you call, um, spy skills to hide this, and it allowed me to recover it. So the, uh, the gavel that he has in front of him was, uh, was stopped at the gates, which I think is a good thing, and I thank John for helping me recover it. Um, but two things that I think that, uh, one thing is that was mentioned was, one of the bills that one of our representatives is working on is to make AP application fees fully paid for by the state, which would allow our students to perhaps take them. There are also some social-emotional initiatives that, um, that might be developing, and I think we'll be hearing about them in our district, and I- I think those are, I think we should be happy that, uh, that those are, that they're working on that. And I think the other big topic is the electric buses, and certainly, um, uh, many of our peers, as well as us, expressed our concerns about that, and I think that the, uh, our representatives were receptive.
Yeah, thank you for that, Christian. And, uh, you know, we- we still haven't seen, uh, any movement or any further discussion. I guess the- the one-house budget process is still being, uh, um, worked out. The horse trading continues, and- and hopefully sometime soon, we'll get an inkling of- of what this all means, and, uh, for us especially, um, as we work on our- our own budget and are so, um, reliant on the state for foundation aid. Um, I want to give a quick update on where we are with some of our board goals. First, the strategic plan. I think we're on track. As we discussed last meeting, we provided in, uh, a roadmap that- that we might follow. Afterwards, we did identify, or have identified, Terry, Jim, and I, uh, three vendors that operate in this space, specific K through 12. Uh, I think our next step is to reach out to those vendors to see what, um, they can do to support us i- if we were to move forward with this, uh, planning process. Uh, if anyone knows of, like we did last time for the- the survey, the engagement survey, if- if anyone knows of any, uh, vendors or have used vendors, uh, in this space specific to K through 12, please let me know, and we'll include them in that, uh, in that due diligence list, um, to get a feel for what's out there. I'm happy to report that at least two of the three vendors that we've identified are actually Bocees-able or state-able, so that will reduce the expense if we were to go down that road of using an external, uh, provider in assisting us in that. So- so that's, I think, really, uh, really good news for us. I think the next step i- is, as we mentioned last time, is to form this ad hoc, uh, board committee. Right now I have Richard and Christian as being, uh, wanting to- to participate in that. Anyone else? You don't have to tell me now, but just shoot me an email or give me a call. I think as we move forward over the next couple of months, there's going to be some- some heavy lifting to be done, especially as it pertains to identifying the- the various stakeholder groups that we want to include in- in the engagement as we move forward on this. Board self-evaluation, thank you. For those who have, uh, provided their input, we have a majority of the board that has completed that exercise. I- I know everyone's busy, but I appreciate that. I will leave it open until everyone can complete. You know, we're missing Carl. I know others have- have started and have not been able to complete it. The good news on that is that I think we're- we're pretty well-aligned. There were some areas that the majority of us, um, identified as developing pertaining to vision, um, as well as corporate, uh, governance and policy issues, that I think at the next meeting, um, hopefully prior to the start or soon thereafter, we can have a constructive retreat and discuss it and find ways that we can improve our- our operations as it pertains to that. I think we've talked enough about UPK, um, for the evening right now. We'll come back to it continuously. Um, so student outcomes and the focus on that, I think, is continuing. And, uh, the last, uh, goal that I'll- I'll talk about, positive school environment, just an update on our engagement survey. I believe we have a meeting with our vendor, uh, Wednesday, uh, kind of a kickoff, um, to work out some of the logistics and- and the various things as it pertains to the actual survey, so- so hopefully, uh, we'll gain some momentum on that and, uh, be able to get this launched, uh, so we can collect the data and start going through it in a meaningful manner. And the last thing, I'll close with, a public service announcement. As everyone knows, we have a- a Board of Education scholarship that is presented annually to a high school senior, and, um, as a result of, uh, of- of that, we need to- to continue to finance it. So- so I'm just letting everyone know, the sooner that you can get $100 to- to Harvey, the better, but, uh, we'd like to get that wrapped up, uh, before, uh, graduation, so we could have it fun. We have enough funds in it, but it's something that we need to replenish as we go on, so I just want to make everyone aware of that- that need, uh, and, um, you know, the sooner the better, uh, we can get, cut a check to Harvey, I'd appreciate it. Okay. Um, with that, I'll move to the consent agenda, and, um, before we start the- this, I would like to remove from the consent agenda, uh, an item that we're still discussing as a- as a board. Um, and I'm looking for it, I believe it's number three, but I'm not, see, yeah, there it is. Personnel actions, number three. Could I have, uh, a motion to remove, uh, item number three from the consent agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you for that.
John, I have a discussion point, if you don't mind, just ever so briefly. Um, just a question is, are there any other items on that agenda item or that consent item that are critical path for the district, or?
So- 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 so-
That we're blocking by- by reviewing the one that we know all- we all know about?
I'm not sure I'm following.
There's several appointments on that, several personnel actions on that-
Correct.
-one item, on that consent item. Are we holding the district up on any one of those items by pausing it, by removing it to discuss the one that we know about further?
Is, are you saying that is this, are there other initiatives that we're going to vote on dependent on the personal action list? Or are you saying-
No.
We're going to bring it back.
We're- so we're- we're going to, we're going to talk about it later in the agenda?
Okay.
But- but-
I'm, I got you. Yes.
And we'll reintroduce it later. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Yes and yes.
Sorry for the confusion on that. We're- we're not going to-
Delay it.
Yeah. There, I just want to remove it for now. We'll reintroduce it later in the agenda, once Harvey, uh, and, uh, and the like is- is done, okay?
Thank you.
But thank you. So, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Um, any opposed? No, I don't think so. Okay, great. Thank you for that. Now, this takes us then to the amended consent agenda, um, which includes, uh, items one, two, four, five, six, seven, eight. Um, is there anyone that would like to, uh, move one of these items for discussion under this heading? Uh, Christian, which one?
Um, number six and number eight.
Six and eight. Okay, thank you. Okay. So with that, um, I'd like a motion to consider consent agenda items one, two- So with that, I'd like a motion to consider consent agenda items one, two, four, five, seven.
So moved.
Second.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passed. Now, let's go to item number six, which is the KJ Water Exemption Resolution. I'll take it as the document, and we have a motion.
Some of.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, discussion, Christian.
The area, but not necessarily about this item. Are we talking about what are exempted?
Yeah.
Sorry, there's something else on the horizon on the 29th, which also I think has an impact on this, which is the joint Village of Cornwall and Hudson and Town of Cornwall on water, and discussing some of these things would, we've already voted on the request for an exemption there, but if the town purchases, if the town purchases land, as has been suggested in some op-eds written by village officials, that would affect our tax rolls. And so it's kind of similar to this, and I just want to, I think, to raise that to the board.
Thank you, Christian, for that. Is there any other discussion on this item? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, ma'am, motion passed, thank you so much. Takes us to number eight, which is the first reading of board policies as per document. I'll take it there, three board policies. May I have a motion? Consideration?
Some of.
Second?
Second.
Okay, discussion, Christian.
I want to talk about policies by. I want to talk about 6215(c), which is the alternative veterans exemption.
That's a number seven.
Wait, that's number seven. We.
But then, that is my mistake, John.
We.
And then I made a mistake, wasn't intended, if, so I guess it is moved on. I think it was because I was looking at it.
So, that's fair, and, look, I don't want to be about just pure process, this was the first reading of these amended changes, or recommended changes. Is there something specific that you want to highlight on that?
On eight, no, but on seven, yes.
Well, I think we've already accepted the first reading, so we're not going to go back on that.
That's in adoption.
But, oh, and it was in adoption? So I'll give you the opportunity to, it's been moved, it's been passed, but I'll give you an opportunity to comment on the issue that you would like us to be aware of.
So this is just a question. So one of the, in our alternative veterans exemption, one of the things that I understand the state allows you to do is what's called a Cold War exemption, which is not one of the ones that is covered in our policy, at least under my reading of that. And that is for veterans who served between 1975 and 1990, because how the state defines time of wartime, the Vietnam War ends in 1975, and the Gulf War starts in 1990 to the present. And so particularly, I know at least two people in our community, who I think would admit anyone's definition of a veteran, have applied for this in the past, and because they are women, and therefore weren't in combat at the time, and the bulk of their career was in that 15-year window, they haven't qualified for this. And I was wondering, maybe this is a question for the policy board, or maybe Harvey, you can address this, is that, does this include that, and it could be improved by adding that to it?
So all of the respective veteran exemptions, all of them but one are in there, and that's the Cold War. And the reason for that is, if you go back in time when these exemptions came up, they were put forth by Senator Larkin, and this was one that was really just, it was just forgotten. And then they came back and they made another legislation to enact it. We have never revisited it after we did those veteran exemptions. It's certainly something we can do. Much like the firefighters and ambulance, I can get information to the board, what this deals with.
Thank you, Harvey, I think that'd be a great resolution.
Sure.
To the issue. I can tell you that, as a veteran myself, I understand that you can be a Cold War veteran and not be covered under the current exemption language. I'm unaware of anyone who would fall into that category, but if.
I go up to at least two people that have been burned down because we don't have it, and I guess what I'm, I guess.
I guess what I'm recommending is that if the policy committee would take this up and consider it, I would appreciate it, and obviously, we have more time to consider and change our policies, and/or amend them in the future.
Christian, thank you for bringing that up. I was unaware of that, and I think it's, it's an important thing to get right. So thank you for bringing that up, and I'm sorry that we had a little cross.
That was, that was completely my mistake.
So, no worries. So then, that brings us to number eight. May I have a motion?
Move.
A second?
No, we already.
Did we already do that?
No, no, we didn't, we've.
Oh, no.
No, because he polled it. That was the one that we were.
But.
I'm sorry, John.
That was my mistake in polling, and I will then make the motion.
Yeah.
Do you vote?
The original batch included seven, not eight, because eight was polled.
Right.
We only voted on six.
Yeah, so.
Okay, so we had a motion.
So we have a motion, we have a second. Discussion? None here? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passed, well, thank you for that, and, okay, we're getting to a better place. All right, so this brings us to a new business, our non-consent agenda. First item is the Volunteer Firefighter and Ambulance Worker Tax Deduction Resolution. I will take this item as per document to include the first reading and adoption of the policy that goes with this resolution. May I have a motion? Thank you, pass, second?
Second.
Thank you, Brendan. Discussion? Any comments?
I'm just speed reading this to, sorry, speed reading this to get the, to make sure that the two-year minimum is in there. If someone can help me find this, I'm not seeing it at a glance, I'm seeing the five-years. Did I go too fast? Does your, does the menu come with pictures? Thank you.
Okay, any, I think, I think it was well-covered at the public hearing, the whereas is cover the items that I think Harvey addressed, to include the lifetime service or the 20-year with a lifetime exemption in the resolution itself. Okay, so I think we've, we've looked at it, we've discussed it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, motion passed, thank you. Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Christian?
I am abstaining.
Abstaining, thank you, thank you. And one abstentia, thank you very much. All righty. Well, that then brings us to the spotlight of tonight's board meeting, our further discussion on the 2425 budget.
John, we got one more on.
We still have the.
The first reading and, item number two, first reading and adoption of the 6215d.
That's the policy that goes with it? I, I'm sorry.
I.
The motion, I kind of grouped it.
Group motions, I like it.
I'm sorry about that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I retract it.
It's okay, it's, seems to be going around, you know, it's, but anyhow, so let's, let's move on then to Harvey with his second presentation regarding the upcoming 2425 budget. Take it away, Harvey.
Okay. So tonight is our second presentation, public presentation on the budget for next year, and we're going to get into a bit more detail this time, as well as the next few meetings. First thing I want to point out is that, as we put the budget together, which again, is an ongoing process, we always try to achieve getting the lowest possible tax levy out there. We do not want to put more on the taxpayer's shoulders than we need to, and we always, beyond any question of doubt, we always try to stay within the tax cap. We also try to maintain programs that are currently successful. With that said, that doesn't mean that we don't want to go from good to greater, great to good, great to greater. So we are always looking to continue to support and grow both our instructional and operational programs. Tonight, with our first step, we're going to be looking at the rollover budget. The rollover budget deals with all those things that we currently have going on, and if we just open the door on July 1st, if something is not relevant or no longer needed moving into 2425, it is not going to be shown here. A good example, just very simply, say we have a special needs student who graduated, I'm not going to keep that cost in the rollover, it's obviously going to come out. So the first part of the budget that we're going to look at are the expenditures. For the 2425, the preliminary budget, we're looking at $89.8 million, and that is in comparison to the current year approved budget of 87.2. So the increase in the expenditures, the budget to budget, is almost 2.6 million. As you might recall, in past years, we've had quite a bit of open items that we kind of feathered in as we got that information. We're in a good place this year in terms of knowing a lot of information that we haven't had at this point in time in the past. The only thing that I will tell you that's still open is special education annual reviews. Those are ongoing, those will actually go after you have to approve the budget. It just is a very long process, but as we get any changes, we will certainly update Let's shift to the other side of the scale, the revenue. How do we pay for those, all those expenditures? Our preliminary revenue projections right now are about 87 million, that's in comparison to our current year's projected revenue of 84.7 million. So all in all, we're looking at an increase of revenue of about 2.3 million. What is that made up of? Well, first of all, the maximum allowable property tax levy, the maximum amount that we could go up to without requiring a 60% majority vote, would be 3.12%, and that would be an increase of 1.6 billion. We are not, I'm not showing that, I'm not incorporating that anywhere, I'm just making that as a point of reference. What is included in there, though, is a 1.2% property tax levy increase, and the reason we use the 1.2 is because that is the exact tax increase that we have for this year. So we kept it the same, and it would represent about $618,000. Additionally, we have an increase in state aid of about 1.5, and we have miscellaneous revenue of almost 200,000. What we are waiting for on the revenue, as we all know, is our final state aid figures. So let's put those two numbers together. We start with our budget, our expenditures, we have 89.8 million, we have our preliminary revenues, which come to 87 million. That leaves us with a shortfall of approximately 2.7 million dollars. As we've done in the past, we've applied or assigned fund balance to this deficit, and we are using 2.5 million at this juncture, because that's what we've been, that's what we use this year as well. Using that 2.5, as you can see, we actually have a small deficit of 239,000. Now, something to keep in mind, obviously, as we go on in these presentations, we'll get more information, we'll hear more coming out of the state, we'll kind of have a sense of where that number is really going to be. Is it going to stay a deficit, or is it going to be a positive number? Certainly, the things that are within the board's purview to get rid of that, and even if they wanted to address some of the needs in the district, are really two key areas. One, you can increase the property tax levy. You could go above 1.2%. And two, we could address, and we could look at the assigned fund balance. We will be looking at the assigned fund balance, as well as all the other fund balances and the reserves, in the next meeting. But that's just something for you to start thinking about. Tonight, we're going to focus on, in more detail, the proposed expenditures. If you take the entire budget, it could really be divided up into these 11 subgroups, and we're going to go through each one of them. The very first one is salaries. Salaries for next year are 42.8 million dollars, that's in comparison to this year's of 42.1, an increase of 715,000. That includes all compensation, all contractual obligations, everything we pay to our employees. In terms of who we pay, in terms of what unit they belong to, if they are even in a unit, meaning a collective bargaining unit, we have six collective bargaining units. I'm happy to say that each and every one of them, the contract has been settled, and we are within that current contract, nothing is open. The reason that's important, on many fronts, but the reason it's important from a budgetary perspective is that we are not estimating, we're not projecting, we're not, you know, trying to figure out where is this contract going to settle, and have those numbers reflected there. We have hard numbers based on actual contracts. Next, we move to pensions. The district is required on three fronts to pay pension expenses. One is the TRS, which is the Teachers Retirement System. I want you to think of that as the certified individuals or the instructional staff, as well as the administrators. And if you look down below, you'll see that the contribution rate that we have to contribute for 2425 went up to 10.02% from the current year of 7.6. The next one is ERS, Employees Retirement, the non-instructional staff. That one jumped up pretty good, 14.8% from 12.76. So it doesn't sound like maybe even that it's a large jump, but the numbers that it's applied against are quite significant. And then we have Social Security, that hasn't changed for quite a long time, 7.65. As I indicate there, the school districts, not just Cornwall, but every school district, we have no say in this, okay? We're told what the rate is, and we have to use it. And in terms of the increase, the increase is 160, almost 162,000 for next year. Next item is health insurance. Health insurance is one of the items that's really driving the budget this year. You might recall, last year, we actually benefited, and we had a decrease. This year, we're paying for it, unfortunately, not because we had the decrease, but just because of the circumstances I'm going to talk about. So we went from 11 point, we went from 10.7 to almost 11.7, so about almost a million-dollar increase, quite significant. Just as some backdrop, we have two plans, we have the Orange Oster Health Plan, and we also have NISHIP, New York State Health Insurance Program. What you'll notice here is that the increases for the OU Health Plan were quite moderate, particularly in regards to what NISHIP increased their rates. The OU Health Plan increases ran from 2.2 to 3.2, which in this time is very good. NISHIP is quite more significant, they're 6%, went all the way up to 21 and 1/2. I will tell you that there's just a handful of people who have elected NISHIP, okay? They have the ability to do so, we give them an alternate plan, and again, there's just a small group. There is dental and vision benefits that are provided in accordance with their collective bargaining agreement. We have four different providers, depending on your respective contract. For those individuals who have chosen not to take health insurance because they're covered by somebody in their family, such as their spouse. covered by somebody in their family, such as their spouse, there's something known as a buyout. We give them that in lieu of taking the health insurance itself. Because just because their spouse has health insurance, doesn't mean that they can't still take it again. So this is a little bit of an incentive, particularly in light of the fact that a family plan is approximately $30,000. Now, what I wanted to mention, in terms of why this is up significantly, every year you hear me talk about, it's about the mix. Okay? The mix about people changing, maybe they were single and they got married and they, you know, they went from say 14,000 up to 30,000 in the premiums that we have to pay. The other thing that's really a, a big contributing factor this year is that we had 12 retirements. Now, what that means is that we have to provide the health insurance in retirement for those 12 people, as well as the newbies that are coming on to fill their seats. Okay? So you're really adding 12 individuals onto the rolls to pay for health insurance. The next area is contractual supplies and equipment. It's a little bit of a catchall, but it encompasses, as you can see there, it encompasses all of our BOSIS. This is the non-special education services. It includes our professional services, legal auditing and security. We do pay quite a bit for security. You might recall, we have not only the sheriffs from Orange County, but we also have a private firm that does it as well for us. We have equipment throughout the district, technology, repairs and maintenance, rubbish, textbooks, and custodial and maintenance supplies. What I will tell you is that included in that 220,000 increase for next year, we did have an increase in the Orange Ulster BOSIS Capital Project Debt Service pass-through of 125,000. So let me explain what that really means. You might recall last year, we had a lot of discussion with regards to the capital project that BOSIS was going to be doing. BOSIS does not incur any direct expenses. It's always passed down to the districts because we in and of itself are a part of BOSIS. We contribute our fair share, so to speak. Our respective share on the capital project debt that they are incurring so far has increased by $125,000. So that's, that's part of that 220. Otherwise, I think we, we did a very good job holding the line and, and staying within our means. Out of district tuition. Next year, it's about 4.2, this year it's about 4.3. So here's a nice, you know, fiscally speaking, it's nice to see a decrease. What this represents is the expense that we pay for all of our special needs students who go out of district. And in terms of where they actually go, if you look at that chart down below, we obviously have BOSIS. BOSIS is a day program. We, we send our students to three different BOSIS, which happen to be in three different counties. We have 31 students on a preliminary basis right now that will be going. And the average cost is about almost $83,000. We also have out of district day programs that are non-BOSIS. These are all private institutions, educational institutions that, based on the students' IEPs and their needs, BOSIS can't service them, so they go to these, these locations. We have eight such locations in five different counties. 19 students and the average cost there is about $7,000. And lastly, we have one student who is an out of district residential, which means they actually stay there. And that cost is because they're staying there, there's also what I'll call room and board. They call it maintenance, but it's a little higher. So in total, it's about 155,000. Debt service. Debt service is going from 3.5 to 3.8, so it's almost to $300,000. If you look at the chart below, you'll see what's driving that. The high, the debt service there is 2.8 million. That's pretty consistent with what it's been in the past, particularly since we refinanced. The New York State Power Authority, we did a district energy project where we converted all, the bulk of that money went to the conversion of our fuel oil to natural gas boilers in our buildings. That debt service is 433. And then the last item there is with regards to the capital project. While the capital project is still ongoing, we borrow money only as we need it. Okay? As we enter Phase 2, which will be this coming spring into the summer, we will be needing to borrow more because we're doing the lion's share of the capital project. This year, we only borrowed 3.3 million. Next year, it'll be up to almost 12 million. That's expected. That's, that's the nature of, of how you have to fund these things. However, there is a cost associated with that. The cost is almost 600,000. Transportation. In addition to health insurance, transportation is another big one. It's going up almost a little more than $400,000. And it's important to understand, I'll, I'll talk about the specifics why, but it's, it's important for you to understand all the pieces that go into transportation. We don't just pay a set number to West Point tours. There's many variables that go in. As you can see there, we have buses that go to in district. That's our, you know, every day. We have non-public schools that go out of district. We have out of district special education. We have our out of district vocational at BOSIS, our CTEC programs. There's an AM and a PM session. We have all of our athletic team travels, and then we have special programs. So let's dig into each one of these. Our in district public schools, we have 27 buses on a three-tier system, which means each bus driver starts at the high school, then quickly zooms out, gets the kids from the middle school, then offloads and then goes, gets the elementaries. So everybody does a three-tier system. We also have four vans in district for special needs students. Out of district special education, this goes back to the out of, out of district tuition that I was talking to you about. We have 16 buses to transport 51 special needs students to 12 out of district schools. And you can see the extent to where they are. We also have the vocational programs, as I mentioned, at CTEC, the BOSIS program. And then we have the non-public schools. We have eight buses that transport 40 students to nine different non-public schools. Our obligation is required as long as it's within 15 miles from the student's home to the place that they are going. Athletic travel. 27 varsity teams, 15 JV and 17 modified. We have one freshman team and two unified. The important thing to keep in mind is that each one of those varsity teams, each one of those junior varsity, each one of those teams, you might recall, we have probably about, you know, 50% home and 50% away. So there's a lot of games that the buses are traveling, the students do. We also have these special programs. We have field trips to Black Rock and Sands Ring. It's not a significant cost, but it is a cost. Regents testing days. The regents testing days are not a normal schedule. We have buses that are going throughout the day to take the students to school and away. We have walking wounded. What that really is, is if a kid gets hurt, gets injured, he can't even walk up the steps in a bus. We have to send a van that has a chairlift so they can get into the bus and get to school. There's quite a bit of that unfortunately. You know, kids break their legs or something like that. We also have homeless students. Under the Federal McKenney-Vento Act, we are required to provide transportation up to 50 miles away for kids who are considered homeless. I will tell you that just you think that things are getting better, they're not. Okay? There's so many things that happen here. This is not just hard times. But if somebody loses their lease and, and they, they have to go live with grandma, you know, 4 miles away, we are obligated, if they so choose to continue going to our school district, we are obligated to continue to bring them here. Okay? God forbid someone has a fire in their house, they have a flood, they have to go live, you know, with a relative temporarily. This is what falls under that. We also have childcare pickup and drop-off, which means just because you get on the bus at your house, doesn't mean that's where we take you back in the afternoon. So there's alternate routes and alternate buses that take care of that. And last but not least, we have a community-based instruction program for our special needs students, which is a really fabulous program. And we take them during the course of the day to different organizations that, where they learn trades and skills such as at ShopRite, Burling factory, and American felt and filter. Utilities. We have four types of utilities that the district incurs cost for. We have fuel oil, which is really just the district office at this point. Actually, not really just, it is the only. We have electricity district-wide, we have natural gas and propane, and we have water and sewer. The costs for next year are going up very, very slightly at about $8,000. And if you look at the comparisons on the bottom, what's really driving this is electricity. And there's two things that are driving that number. One is technology. More computers, you know, I can't, I can't tell you how much more electricity that, those things are just eating up. The other thing that's driving this is facility use. Okay? Every year, there's more and more facility use. The buildings are open more, they're open later. This drives that up. Natural gas is down. We're part of a consortium, as it indicates there, and that's actually benefiting us. Next, we have occupational education. This speaks toward the CTEC programs that we send our students to out at BOSIS. We are required by law to provide a vocational option to all of our students. What you'll see here is, the increase though, is quite high. It's almost, it's $265,000. And the reason for that is, you might remember last year, I talked about there was, there was a bit of a spike in vocational programs. And I don't know if it was because of COVID or what, but the, the numbers have been rising with regards to occupational ed. It's a good thing. Not a lot of kids, they don't, college might not be for them. This is a great option. And what we're looking at right now, we used to be down in the 90s in terms of students. This year, we have 118 students. And in talking with guidance, it looks like I'm going to just be right around there at the high end, close to 120 for next year. Insurance. An important action. We're actually decreasing our insurance costs as a whole. We are part of the NYSER family, as I call it. It's, it's an organization, it's a nonprofit consisting strictly of school districts. We are one of them. It's actually member-owned, so we're actually part of the owners. They represent 345 schools in New York State. The only cost outside of this number that is not with NYSER is New York State Unemployment Insurance and Workers Compensation. Okay? But all in all, the insurance is down about $66,000, which is nice to see. Lastly, we have our transfer to capital. You might recall, transfer to capital is a line item in the general fund budget that gives us the ability to do small capital projects without going out for a referendum. Okay? By virtue of it being in the budget and the taxpayers voting on the budget, they are in a sense approving it. So for 2425, what we're looking at is two projects. The first one is really Phase 2 of what we established last year. We talked about, as a result of our security audit, we talked about hardening and replacing all of the interior corridor doors, including the frames, in all of our buildings. Okay? So it was, it was about 100, I'm sorry, it was about 1,200,002. And we just couldn't digest it all last year, so it was split up. It was an understanding that it'd be split up between two years. So this is the second piece of that. The other piece, which is, is relatively much smaller, is the conversion and renovation of a classroom, C9, over in the middle school, to turn it into a Home &amp; Careers Classroom. If you're familiar with the middle school, there is a current Home &amp; Careers Classroom. It is literally like 60 years old. It looks like something out of Betty Crocker, you know, Oven Bake. This is going to move us forward. And what we're looking to do is, there used to be a computer lab in C9 that no longer exists. What we're looking to do is convert that entire space to a modern, updated Home &amp; Careers Classroom. And what we mean by that is, we're talking about ovens, we're talking about range hoods, we're talking about, you know, all cooking appliances and things like that, dishwashers. And unfortunately, because of the nature of the work that has to be done, it has to go through State Education Department. Even though it's a small amount that we could do in-house, it requires their oversight. So that's why it's part of this number. And with that said, we have three more meetings. The next meeting on March 18th, we'll be talking more about revenue, fund balance and reserves. On April 8th, we'll be reviewing and prioritizing the needs assessment, particularly, and hopefully in conjunction with getting some final state aid projections or state aid numbers. And then on the 18th, the board has to adopt the budget. That doesn't mean that there can't be discussion and more thought put into everything. I gave you a lot of information and I'll open it up for questions now.
Go ahead, Bass. You had something earlier on?
Yeah, thanks, John. On the contractual supplies and equipment slide.
Yep.
Yeah, the very bottom, one key expenditure driving the 2425 increase. $125,000, is it due to the BOSIS capital project that we voted not to participate in? If I can remember it right from last year.
Yes. So what the board had to make a decision on going back even further was how BOSIS had to fund their capital project. And there were two ways. And, you know, we put a stake in the ground, Cornwall, about how we felt it should be funded. But what this really speaks toward is regardless of how it was funded, this is the debt service that they're incurring that gets distributed to each of the respective districts. They're just starting their project too. So this number will grow.
So whether we agreed to go with their recommendation or not, and we didn't go with their recommendation, I mean, no matter what, we still owe this amount?
That is correct. That is correct.
Because the voters of Orange County, or with the voters of the member areas, not all of Orange County, because New York is not included, voted yes for their budget.
Right. It was really, we had a say in.
Right. Christine?
Harvey, thank you so much for making this so digestible. It's a lot of information, but I followed along, so thank you. It was great. My question is related to the needs assessment that we, we reviewed at the last meeting. Are all of those elements baked into these main headings?
Good question. Absolutely not.
Okay.
As I mentioned in the beginning, this is a rollover. This is not adding anything.
Oh, you did say that.
Yep. So that's why we have to talk about it in a, in a future meeting.
Brendan?
Thank you, John. Harvey, just to go back, I echo Christine's yearly, thank you for making this digestible. That slide, preliminary revenue projections. It was towards the beginning, yeah. So you're, under increase in state aid, that 1.5 million, if I'm remembering my numbers from our last class, that was the money that we have guaranteed rolling over, but it doesn't from the state for that, that's, there was 2.2, 1.5 of which is definite, 700,000 of which was our projected as of right now, foundation aid. Did you?
Your numbers, your numbers add up, but you're, there's a little confusion there. Let me just clarify. Think of it like this, the bottom line is that we had, we received 2.2 million dollar increase in governor's proposal. Okay? Now, I'm saying 1.5. What happened? What's the difference? The difference is the governor's 2.2. The difference is, the governor's 2.2 million dollars is the difference between what we actually got this year and what we, what she's proposing we're gonna get next year. Okay? So actual, actual. This 1.5 is the difference between what we budgeted and what her proposal is. So we ended up budgeting more last, this year than we actually got.
So this 1.5 represents what would be the final numbers if the 2.2 helped?
Yes.
Got it.
That is correct.
Okay.
That is correct. And the reason, you have to understand, with regards to state aid, that all the projections that we get, whether it's the governor, or it's even the legislature's final numbers, so many of them are based on data that we send up all throughout this year. Okay? But they, they put a stake in the ground at a certain point. Things can change. Okay? Another good example, BOCES aid. In, in order to calculate BOCES aid, BOCES has a requirement that they have to send up to the state a projection that they feel each district will incur through them. We don't really have a say in that. There are trends and all that stuff. If we incur more than they say we will, we don't get the aid on that. So what happens is they figure high. Okay? It's capped. The state basically says, BOCES, your Cornwall is gonna spend 2 million with you? Thank you. If we spend 2.5, we're not getting the aid on that extra 5. So they, they have to figure high, and we appreciate that. But I also have to reconcile that a little bit when, when I get these numbers from the state. Some of the calculations, particularly for special needs students, it's based on information that's a rolling number from two years ago. And it's just so much changes from two years to, you know, the next year. This is just the system that we operate in. But the point is, that's, that's what we're looking at.
Got it. Okay. Thanks.
Louis?
Appreciate that. Always, Harvey. Thank you very much. You, you mentioned general facility use is one of the larger costs that we incur?
General-
Or, or it's, it's up, it's up? General facility use, you're talking about lights, electricity, gas, fuel oil, only the DO? Can, the, the towns still use our facilities for the summer sports and such?
And everything?
Have we, we opened that, we opened that back up post-COVID, right? That's all gone? Okay. Um, I, I just wanted to confirm that. And then also, the Bo, the Bo, on the heel, the BOCES comments, $125,000 increase, right?
Right.
That's just this year's increase? We can expect yearly increases with that?
It's, it's most likely, yes.
As they borrow for their project?
Correct.
They will spread that out amongst their participating districts?
Right.
Yearly, though? We won't, it's, it's a, is it one and done per year? Or they'll borrow throughout the project mid-year?
No, usually, usually, much like us, you take out the ban at the, you know, you're doing most of the work over the summer anyway.
Right.
So you're taking it out, like in June, right around there to pay the bills.
And that was my next question for us, for our phase two. Are we taking out, are we bonding a lump sum, a bulk lump sum for, to cover phase two?
So-
How's, how's that look?
So you'll see there, it's, it's almost $12 million.
Yeah.
If you take the $5 million capital reserve and put it on top of that, that, that's short of the 22.9 million. That's because during this school year, there's, there's gonna be some work done afterward. We're also gonna be holding certain retainage, there's gonna be to-do lists. So this is not the extent of everything, because we will not be paying everything. Why would I borrow money we don't need?
Right.
Okay? So-
But the, specifically the phase two, that's supposed, that's, we just got approved for?
Yes.
Will you borrow that? How much of that phase two will you borrow upfront? Or how much?
Um, I will borrow, or remember, fate, there's, there's also-
Yeah, right.
There's also like a phase 2A.
Yeah.
That we're pushing off, we have to push off into 2025. So I take that away.
Yeah.
And then I take, it's typically, I'm looking at about 15% not being needed for retainage, punch list items, things like that. So that's how I come up with that.
Okay. I'm good. Thank you.
Good, Louis.
Thank you.
Jim?
Uh, thank you, Harvey. Yeah, I think last week I, our last meeting, I hit you with three or four, so today I'll, I'll be light and only hit you with one. And it actually dovetails nicely with Louis's question. So what is the, sort of the life cycle of this capital project? Cause here, we're having a ban, so that's a bond anticipation note. So that's sort of what, like a short-term floating instrument until we get the full bond amount spent, and then we get that as a bond? Because ultimately, it's getting repaid by New York State, right? So when, when does New York State start repaying their, over 25 years or 30 years, whatever that like, life cycle is? When do those-
Sure.
-payments start coming in?
Okay. You actually rolled a bunch of questions to the one, and they were, they're good. So-
It was actually four.
There was four.
More than last year.
At least four.
Than last time.
So yes, that number, we borrow short-term, which is on an annual basis. And then, much like that 3.3, that's coming due in June, we roll that over in conjunction, it's part of that number there. So I'm rolling that over for our phase one, and I need to also borrow for what we need for phase two. Okay? So we keep borrowing on a short-term basis until the project is substantially complete. Okay? Because it's at that point in time that we start to get aid. Okay? So the, so the state does not give us aid until there's certain things that are sent up. There are certificate of substantial completion, we have to also do the final cost report, and then they, they kick it in. How long do I, do I see this happening? We have pieces that are gonna now go into 2025, just based on the landscape and the environment out there. So we, we have a little bit of ways.
Right.
Which actually is not the worst thing in light of the interest rate environment.
Yeah, so if you're doing work in the 25, it could be in late 25 or into 26, where you wrap all of the-
That's exactly-
The things that you, the short-term instruments that you've been rolling over, you wrap it into a longer term-
Serial bond.
Yeah. And what's the repayment timeline from New York?
20 years.
Okay, so you wrap it into a 20-year bond?
Right. We could go shorter, but 20 years is-
For argument's sake, starting in, you know, from 2026 to 2046, and you get those 20 yearly payments from New York State to reimburse that.
Right.
Okay, so, so that, I just, that debt service expense is sort of a short-term drain on the budget. It's not a long-term drain.
That's correct.
Because we'll be getting those repayments from New York.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Good. Anyone else? No? Harvey, let me first echo everyone else's accolades. Thank you for putting this in a manner that's easily digestible. It's good stuff, really is. Let's go to salaries for a second. So we have a, there's a mixing issue, right? We, we have a lot of retirements, we have hires that we haven't even found yet, right? New hires that we're gonna bring in, right? Hopefully to fill these, these, uh, these positions. When you make this forecast in terms of the salaries, does it include the level that the new hires are coming in at?
Okay.
Or is it just a replacement of what the expense associated with the, the departing teacher or administrator was?
Okay.
How, how's that work?
Sure. Those individuals that will still be working for us in 2425, their salary piece that's included in that number is defined. It's, it's definite. Okay? Because it's really simple, based on the salary schedule. We have retirements.
Right.
Okay? Somebody was making, say, 120. We are now gonna be filling that position with somebody, you know, not as, as veteran as, as they were. So there'll be some breakage there. Instead of 120, maybe we're paying them 75. Okay? So that's also playing into that number. If we didn't have a lot of retirements, that number would conceivably be higher in terms of the increase. But to your point, how do, how do we project? What do we use for those individuals who we haven't even hired yet? Yes, we have to make a projection based on what we envision them being paid. You know, there's a certain step, certain experience level, that we kind of see what we've been doing in the past couple of years.
And so you're working the pro forma, trying to, to, to guesstimate what that might look like, right? So any difference is truly, the majority of that difference is in whatever bump increase of, of, of salary increases is? Right? Because the, the number that you're mixing in to the existing workforce is, is pretty small, right? I would think.
Well, again, this year, we had 12 retirements.
But against a backdrop of over 200 existing employees in that, that discipline, right? It's-
True, but let's think about this. Let's suppose, let's suppose the retirees, each retiree was making 110.
Yeah.
If we're replacing them with somebody making 80, just as an example, that's $30,000 less.
All right.
Multiply that times 11 people, you got 330, you got $300,000. That's a lot.
Hence, it's not a million dollars, which would be-
Right.
-what you'd expect. It's, it's in the 700s.
Right.
As long as that occurs, I guess, we'd, we'd be good in our, our estimation process.
Right.
Okay, great. Thank you for that. So, so just to summarize, the seats that we had this year, we're forecasting having next year in terms of salaries, even though there may be some space issues in terms of finding the faces to fill those spaces?
Right. Yeah. You know, if, if my, I can't say my estimate's gonna be dead-on, you know? We're, you know, someone's gonna come in at step seven, and maybe I, I budgeted step eight type of thing.
But, but in terms of the actual space, you know, whether it's a seven, a six, a five, or-
Right.
-a one, that, that's not the issue. That space is, is estimated to be filled.
Oh, yes. Yes, correct.
Right?
Yes. Those are positions we need.
Right. So, so, so on the administrative side, we had 19 to start the year. We may be down one due to attrition. But we're gonna, the, the budget has that need established, getting back to where we started the year at.
That's, that's correct.
Yeah.
The rollover reflects what, what the needs have to remain at for next year.
Right. Okay, great. Thank you for that. My last question, occupational expenses, right, for, for, for training?
Yes.
So we have 120 students estimated to participate in the CTEC program, and they're all over the place, right? Some are in Goshens, some are in Montgomery.
There's a couple of locations.
Right, at the airport. They're, they're scattered, right? Does that number reflect just the, the expense of the program that they're in?
That is-
Or are there other incidental costs that, that get lumped into that?
There's two costs. One is the tuition that BOCES charges, and that's what this number represents. It's a, it's a, it's the same amount. You see here, I mentioned, there's 32 programs they have in 11, 11 different academies. It doesn't matter where you go, what you're doing. Wherever you go, it's gonna cost the same amount. It's just short of $13,000. And it's a half-day program for the entire year. The only other cost is transportation, to get them out there and get them home.
And we're not including that in these expenses?
That is not part of that.
That's in the transportation?
Correct.
Got it. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, thank you.
Fantastic, Harvey. Thank you very much. That then brings us to recognition of visitors, round two. Is there anyone wishing to provide us some comment, sort of feedback, input? None? Again, I'm going to be following the agenda, just so people don't fear that I've skipped something. We'll do closing comments, then we're gonna do the executive session to continue our conversation on, on personal action, and then come back when that's hopefully completed, and then close the meeting. Makes sense?
Yeah.
Great. So, so closing comments. I appreciate everyone's patience this evening. I know we started a little earlier than normal, and I appreciate your, your gusto in carrying through and staying with us. Let us start with ladies first, Christine.
Thanks. I will be brief. I, I'm, I'm sorry I don't have all the names, but I do want to highlight that BOCES had a Skills USA program or competition last weekend, and we had one of our students, Sean, a senior, placed first in the automotive competition, and then there were two other students who also placed. I will bring their names next time to give them full credit, but I just think, you know, in, in light of talking about expenditures for BOCES and the programs there, our students, like they do in all the things that we do, really excel and, and shine on behalf of Cornwall. So it's definitely worth highlighting them and giving them credit, cause it's not, it's an above and beyond their daily coursework, or, or, you know, what they have to do in that program. So congratulations to them. I will bring their names so that we can properly honor them, but I did want to mention that.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you, Christine. Bass?
Thanks, John. Yeah, I don't have a lot to say. Maybe just one comment. I mean, we, today, Monday, was the first day after the break, one-week break. And I still found, I know, I mean, I think everybody remembers, I did talk about this I don't see how this one week, towards the end of February, helped. I know I heard counter-argument that, yes, it does, and family go, families going to Florida, for instance, wherever, but I would urge, again, the administration to rethink about this. And this week, being given towards the Christmas break, make it two weeks instead of one. Again, rather than giving it in, in the middle of February. I mean, I can tell you, my kids were sitting at home, I'm working, their mother's working, they were watching TV the whole day. It was kind of waste of time, breaking the mood, if you want, coming from Christmas, studying for, what, three, four weeks, then breaking again, and Easter's coming. I don't see how this, again, break in February fits and help. Thanks.
Thanks, Bass. Louis?
Thank you. Kate and Nick aren't here. Usually, I like to thank them for their input in the schools. Again, it's the oxygen that reminds you of why, of why you're here and what we do. One of their, the, the report noted about Darren at COH with the Hunter Card Challenge. I thought that was pretty unique, and it sounded fun, it sounded fun. Congratulations to the sports teams. And it's springtime, we're gonna start seeing our, our shows and our band and orchestra and drama productions occurring. I would encourage everybody to attend one, if not all, cause they're always, always spectacular. And now, Bass, just to, I mean, we try not to go back and forth, but just to give you a, a snippet, I don't have a crystal ball, but I'm gonna guess, you're gonna be happy in 2425.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brendan?
Thank you, Louis, for predicting the future. Old par. What was it? Put it to your head? Yeah, for, just keep it short. Really, thank you to all the fire department, ambulance, volunteers and workers for their advocacy to get us to this point. I mean, it certainly wasn't our idea. We just followed through kind of on, on what had bubbled up from them. So thank you not only for the incredible sacrifices that they made, but also for those who advocated on behalf of their brethren who will also benefit. And thank you, Nick and Kate, for not only providing their updates, but it's always nice to see young people growing into the adults that they will become. And I think asserting yourself and saying, "I gotta go," is part of that process. So, good on them. Yeah, and thank you again, Harvey, for a great presentation. It's, it's always just a bear, and really, really appreciate you making it so simple. It's hard to imagine how, how difficult it would be for someone not of your expertise to put that together, so we appreciate it. Thanks.
Christian?
I apologize, but I'm not gonna be brief, but two quick notes. I apologize, but I'm not gonna be brief, but two quick notes. The first one, just to note, it's great to see you back, and hopefully, you know, we will keep this momentum going, going into March. And secondly, I just want to recognize a district employee, Angela Mann, who, while many of us were on break last week, and I just want to pass on the appreciation of alumni who wanted to get some information and needed it for their life, and someone, Angela Mann went above and beyond to help her out, and I think it's, the most important thing is, I think the most thing of reflecting character is what you do when you don't think anyone is watching. And when there's not really any credit, you just do your job and you help someone out in need, and I think I speak for many board members just to recognize that, and not just because that individual person, but because it's emblematic of a lot of different people in the district, and this happens to be her, and I just want to give her that recognition. So, for the longer part, it's Black History Month, so I just have some reflections on that, connected to education and Cornwall, and I promised that I have a script here, so even though this will be a little bit extended, there will be an end. And I just want to recognize several individuals reflecting Black History and just how that kind of may be some lessons we can learn for what's in front of us. And then, the first one I just want to say is kind of a personal here to me, Baird Ruston. Black, gay, communist, mid-century America, and that's a lot of strikes against, and probably, you could make the argument that he probably accomplished more than anyone in the 20th century for America. He's originator of the Freedom Rites. He started the first, principled organized, the First March to Washington, led the integration of the Army. Second March to Washington, as well known. Visited the Montgomery Ballot Cut, convinced Martin Luther King to not have armed guards at a time when there were many threats against his life. And so, you know, that is the basic story, but he believed in something called coalition politics, which simply put is that my group does better when all groups do better. And it was an approach that served him well, because what's lesser known about Baird Ruston is that when Japanese-Americans were having their property expropriated in 1940s, he flew out to California to defend their rights. And when the United Federation of Teachers was formed, he was right there advising them. In fact, his offices for the Philip Randolph Institute were in the UFT offices. So, if you don't know this, you know, there's a movie out, The Academy War, thinks it's fairly good, and I would just recommend it to anyone who hasn't seen it yet. Secondly, Bob Moses. Probably, to me, one of the people, the greatest physical courage in a movement of many, you know, great physical courage, and really a true example in leadership. Led the Council Federal Organizations, Freedom Summer, Mississippi. When the three civil rights workers were murdered in Mississippi, he was the person that brought everyone together. But this real lesson in leadership is that, not because he was there, but he left. And he left, he said, for a reason, because when people start to depend on you, it doesn't let them grow. And he said, "What happened in this movement is people relied on me because they expected me to do everything." And he left the movement because, he said, "This is the only way that people are gonna do it." And then he led to what he called the next chapter in civil rights, which was the teaching of algebra. And he spent 30 years with, called The Algebra Project. I encourage anyone to read Radical Equations, it talks about it, that math is civil rights. And he went and developed a lot of the math curriculum, the algebra curriculum that we still use all around the United States to this day. And, you know, it tells that, you know, how education connects to some things that are maybe not as obvious. Third, Paul Robeson, and this is kind of personal to me, because my first teaching job was on the east side of Buffalo, and I used to go past the Paul Robeson Theater, and that was the end of my day, and it was kind of like a marker for me, and I knew who Paul Robeson was, and it was kind of, let's say, you know, kind of a mark for a period of my life. But what's also on that route was the Tops Market where, that I've been in too many times, passed it twice a day, four or five days a week, where people were murdered in Buffalo, east side of Buffalo. And when I would see, when I saw the faces in the press conference, I recognized parents who I taught, whose children I taught, and it always reminded me about how education connects that, because those parents on the east side of Buffalo, to this day, the most committed parents to education I've ever met. But Paul Robeson also connects to something close to their home, because in the 1940s, he came up to Peekskill, New York, and something that was kind of sometimes referred to as the Peekskill Riots. And where it occurred was, if not literal, but a figurative stone's throw from the house I grew up in, where my parents still live. And it's a little bit of telling the history, because I had teachers, both black and white, who lived in Peekskill, through this. Never mentioned once, ever, local history, US history. First time I read about it was sitting in the National, well, not the first, I read about it in the National Diet Library in Japan, in Japanese, contemporary when it happened, and about history that we remind ourselves that something that we think is controversial, but is kind of close to home, other countries think it's something that's worth talking about. It also came up in my teaching career, because in 2007, I had a student who just moved up from New York City, and the way they were greeted was a burning cross on their front lawn, not too far from here. And I talked about this, because I had explained the community that I grew up in and why this is the way it happened, not 50 years ago, but 10 years ago. And I had both students, not just the person who had the cross burned on their front lawn, but also the sister of the family that burned the cross on the lawn. There's a longer story of that. You can find it, the story was reported at the time, but it's something about why these things are important. And I think about, when we talk about history, because if you go to where the Peekskill Riots occurred, it's now a golf course in a gated community, and it just came up recently because one of our employees, they actually have their marriage there. And it's kind of one of those things that gets hidden when you don't look for it, but it's right here in the Hudson Valley. But I wanted to finish with kind of going back to one last thing in Cornwall, which is, you know, Cornwall has a tradition as well, that's part of the story, and just talk about the 124th New York, which was Cornwall's regiment, the A&amp;C Company, their major was James Cromwell of Cromwell Manor. And at the Battle of Gettysburg, they found themselves at the end of the Union Line, defending what is now usually called the Devil's Den, and were surrounded by about 5,000 troops with only 300. And suffered the second highest regimental casualty rate of the entire Civil War, 87%. The 20th Maine, that was just a little bit away, that gets all the publicity, same battle, 30%. And they did that because they didn't just stand there, they actually charged, and did a spoiling charge to buy time, because they realized how important it was to be there. And the point of the story is that their major, James Cromwell, before he died, he decided to get on his horse, which in the Civil War would be, you know, inviting someone to shoot at you. And they said, "You should get down. This is not safe." And suppose these last words, and a little bit of a paraphrase, said, "There are times where you have to be seen." So, James Cromwell, from just a stone's throw from where we are, and Isaac Nichols, where the monument that's in Salisbury Mills, were two Cornwall people that died on that day. So, here's the point of this long story. I just want to encourage my colleagues, next meeting, we're gonna have the DEI policy coming up, and I encourage everyone to be seen and support the DEI policy. Thank you.
Richard?
Thank you. Hard to follow up on that one. But very briefly, I want to touch on first the Science Expo that was, I believe, in the beginning of the month, and end of January. And I think I saw Christian and Christine there. I just want to say how impressed I was at these third and fourth grade students. I mean, every project, every experiment I went up to, they did a great job in explaining it. I learned things. The first student I actually went up to when it was first starting, I went up, I said, "Oh, is this your project?" She's like, "Yeah, but I'm still setting it up, so it'll take a few minutes." I'm like, "Oh, do you want me to come back?" She's like, "No, stay right here." I'm like, "Oh, okay." But she did a phenomenal job explaining how she's setting it up, what's happening, the procedure. She should be a teacher one day, and I told her that, and I told her mother that. So, credit to her and credit to every student that was involved, and all the staff members and volunteers that participated. I also saw Kate, our student rep there. She was a judge of the experiments, and we had a little conversation, and I just want to use that point to show how important student engagement is. You know, we have great students that want to be involved, and when we're talking about the strategic plan engagement, I think this is one stakeholder that we really need to make sure are involved in that process. And, you know, I saw student engagement at the DEI committee meeting, that was livestreamed, and I think it was phenomenal, and we need to do more to allow for more roadways to have students participate along with other stakeholders. And with that, thank you.
We're gonna circle back to Christine.
Thank you. Quickly, I wasn't prepared to go first. I think, I really just want to give a huge congratulations. I don't know how many people are aware, but Cornwall Central High School's Drama Department was granted the rights to be the only school in New York State to do Harry Potter play next fall. So, that is a really significant recognition of the program, and under Tony Ravinsky's leadership, the products that they put on, when you think about New York State, there's some pretty talented schools out there, and there's only, I don't know the exact number, but, you know, it's across the country, there's only so many people that have the rights to do this. It's one per state. So, we should be really proud of that, that Cornwall was acknowledged as being best-in-class and being able to put on this premier event. And it's next fall, so you have time to clear calendars.
Thank you, Christine. No, that was well worth the wait. Jim?
I'll be brief. I really just, where do I want to start? We'll start with point two. So, you know, everybody always likes to get up here and talk about the great things our students do, and I love to do that as well. You know, great to hear Kate and Nick talk about the county jazz band participation. Christine, I saw the same Bosie Skills America competition in the local that you saw, it was great to see that. Also saw in the local, we have one, a couple students, one male, one female, qualify for the state skiing championship, which is pretty cool. And I'm pretty sure both the boys and the girls' basketball team have made the playoffs, so, girls did? Okay. Did I misread it? I thought the boys made it, too.
Okay, well, sports teams, you know, always doing great things, and it's the other thing. And I think the other, the other point I'll just make is, this is mainly budget-related, but also ties in with the first responder tax credit that we had today. Come tell us, community, come and be a part of the budget process. Obviously, we had several parents today advocate on behalf of UPK, and that's part of it. You know, that's an issue that we know about, and we talk about every year. You know, there's issues that come up. Christian brought up the Cold War exemption. I didn't know that was a thing. So, if you're in the community and you have something that you think would be helpful to us, we may know it, we may not. So, please come, community, and either come in a public session, or write an email to the board and just, you know, if there's something that we need to know about to make it part of the budget process, or something that we just need to know about in general, please do reach out and let us know.
Jim, that's great. I mean, teamwork does make the dream work, and all this doesn't happen by itself, right? So, all the input, and there'll be plenty of opportunities going forward for further engagement, so I hope everyone takes advantage of that. I'm going to end my remarks there, knowing that I've given Christian some of my time, but that's fine. I think I found it quite educational. And I'd ask now to entertain a motion to go back to item number three, personal action, and ask for a motion to move into executive session to have a further conversation on that. Can I have a second?
Second.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Fantastic. Motion approved. We'll go into executive session. We will go into executive session. We will then, once we're done, we will come back out, and I'm not sure if there will be any further action by the board, other than to close the meeting at that time, but all, any actions the board takes will be public and at the conclusion of our executive session. Thank you.[1489.58]
Okay, the gang's all here. I want to thank everyone for sticking around. We've just come out of executive session. Our conversations continue. And at this point, I'd like to adjourn the meeting. Can I have a motion?
To move.
Second?
Second.
Motion to come out of tonight's meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Have a good night, everyone.